Call the Monday, December 9th, 2024, Luddington Meeting, Luddington City Council Meeting to order. Madam Clark, would you call the roll, please?
Counselor Chisano. Counselor May.
Here.
Counselor Wencesky.
Here.
Counselor Large.
Here.
Counselor Stibbitts, here. Counselor Kane.
Present.
Counselor Bonger.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. At this time, I'd invite Pastor Brian Ford of Living Word Church to come and deliver the invocation. Thank you, Pastor.
Heavenly Father, we come to you this more, this evening, thanking you for your goodness, thanking you for the opportunity to meet together, Lord, to discuss the direction of this city. And Lord, I thank you for everyone that has chosen to serve in this city council, and I thank you that they've answered that call. And Lord, your word says that righteousness exalts a nation, the same is true for a city. So, Lord, we ask for righteousness, what you consider to be right and true. And Lord, that takes your wisdom, but thankfully, your word says in James, Chapter 1, Verse 5, that we can ask you for wisdom, and you'll give it to us. So, Lord, I thank you for the wisdom of God upon every council member. I thank you, Lord, for leading and guiding and directing our city into your plan, which is always for good, and we thank you for it, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Would you join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'll open the floor for public comment. I request that anyone wishing to address council, please step to the lectern, speak directly into the microphone, and state your name, street address, or ward, city of residence, and organizational affiliation, if that's appropriate. Once you've done this, you'll be recognized for three minutes. Please address all comments to this chair. If the time limit expires during any comment, I would ask that the speaker respectfully finish their sentence and yield the floor. If you wish to present materials directly to the council, I would ask that you leave those materials on the lectern shelf below the microphone, and there'll be another opportunity for public comment following communications from city officials. And the floor is now open.
Luke 8:17.
Sir, could you stop and identify yourself, please, first?
Daniel Jensen, 503 North Lavina Street.
Thank you, sorry.
Luke 8:17, "For nothing is secret that shall not be made manifest; neither anything hid that shall not be known and come abroad." Psalm 75:7, "But God is the judge; he puteth down one and seteth up another." Isaiah 33:22, "For the Lord is our judge, the Lord is our law-giver, the Lord is our king; he will save us." Bullet points, levied tax millage rate, UDO, wastewater treatment plant, Fish and Wildlife Service Building at 229 Selcher Bobby Drive, PM Highway, Jabavi Drive bypass, Old Train Depot, Whitehall Industries Madison Street, Ray's Marina, Thompson Cabinet Company, 4.5 Acres, 510 Lake Street, Harborview Marina, Water Treatment Plant, US Army Corps of Engineers. Now, everyone up here should be familiar with these particular ones. DNR, Michigan State Waterways Commission, Act 320 of 1947, Act 78 of 1956, Act 310 of 1957, Act 237 of 1959, Gas Luxury Tax. Elaine Isley, Fred Sitkins, Sue Stewart, Terms Ended on 9/18/24. M E D C, Eagle, AFFEW in the city of Luddington, the Chamber Alliance, Great Lakes Marine History Conference, Michigan Shoreline Stewards, North Country CMISA, Hammond Lake Preservation Society. Now, I was told you guys actually read the red folder. Then you should be familiar with 18 U.S. Code 2382, Misprisoned of Treason. Whoever owing allegiance to the United States and having knowledge of the commission of any treason against them conceals and does not as soon as may be disclosed and make known to the same, to the president, or to some judge of the United States, or the governor, or to some judge or justice of the particular state is guilty of misprisoned of treason and shall be fined under the title or imprisoned for not more than seven years or both. Now, EIL 13823, that President Trump put into, into effect on January 30th, 2018. If Biden was actually president the last four years, why hasn't he rescinded this EIL and closed Gitmo?
Thank you, Mr. Jensen. Any other public comment?
Looking for that timer. Jeff Henry, Muskegon resident, Luddington businessman. Two weeks ago, I mentioned, Mr. Chairman, about the poverty ratings in discussion with zoning, and I would like to ask everybody here, in their own minds, if they know the difference between the poverty rating and the Alice rating. The poverty rating has been changed to an Alice rating. That's how grants are calculated in a municipality and entire area. I mentioned that the city of Luddington has a 72% to 75% poverty rating. That translates to a 20% Alice rating. You're basically taking the 25% out of the 75, and you're putting it down here in the Alice rating. What does all that mean? What does that mean for the city and its residents when you change the zoning to where you're going to change it to? What's the repercussions of that? Are you asking yourselves, can you explain to your constituents what this means? What does this mean to your zoning? If you don't know what that means, you should stop this now or resign, because you did swear an oath to the Constitution. If you're not representing to the people what these ratings have to do with your zoning, then you're not upholding the Constitution. The people need to be transparent, you need to be transparent with the people. They need to know what these things will do. This city has been drunk on grants for 45 years, and you're going to invite grant hounds into your community. Muskegon Heights and Muskegon are full, and you're a lot more good-looking than they are to bring their grant money here. So, consider, you need to tell your constituents what's going on. You represent the Constitution for them. You are here for them, not for their or the council members' own personal viewpoints. Please, explain to the people what these poverty ratings mean. Find out what they do mean for yourselves.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Tom Rada, Sixth Ward. On June 1st, 1942, over 82 years ago, this city council unanimously passed the city's first comprehensive zoning ordinance, a 14-page document mapping out nine distinct districts within Luddington while covering all aspects of zoning and land use. In the eight decades since, the amended zoning code has grown to 19 distinct districts and 115 pages, with a process that involved the input of officials and citizens of the city. The citizens are now threatened with this council enacting Luddington's Unified Development Ordinance in a 200-plus-page document that lists 12 distinct districts. This LUDO is form-based code using physical form rather than separation of uses as the organizing principle for the code, prepared by a big-city consultant using a lightly-added version of the UDO template that they use for other cities. This is not 82 years of negotiation and compromise within the community in order to create guidelines for land use. This LUDO sets strict rules discreetly subsidized by state and federal money that leads small cities like Luddington into direct obedience under a regional master plan subtly contained in this mostly-city-uniform, form-based code. Land use rights are literally stolen from Luddington landowners when you pass this. Those rights are lost as the city, state, and federal government increase their power over private land in tyrannical fashion, because they think they're better property managers than you. If you want to win accolades from your constituents and simplify our zoning code, endeavor to get it looking more like the 1942 zoning ordinance than the despotic and cumbersome 2024 Luddington Unified Development Ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else for public comment?
Oh, you.
Good.
I'm not sure if this is the right time. Jason Kirkpatrick, 914 Maple Street. Looking at your agenda, you guys are going over approving the 2025 budget. It's that you guys are doing that tonight. So, there was some, some talk about levying a new tax, because the city needs more money in the budget. So, I'm just here to say, I don't want my taxes raised. I think the city needs to work within their budget, just like everybody else does. When prices go up, we have to figure out how to stay within our budget, so we're not going over that. You know, I go around the city, and I see people, you know, the city workers working, and I'm not saying that they're not working. I own a construction business. I noticed today, I watched some guys, you know, fixing a patch in the road, three guys out there doing it. It's a one-man job, you know, pouring a three-foot-by-three-foot piece of concrete. Doesn't take two guys to trial it out, it only takes one. One of the ways to save money in the budget is by putting the appropriate workers out there that need to do the job, instead of having extra ones out there we have to overpay for. That's all I have to say. No raises in taxes, that's all I want. You guys have a good day.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, then we'll close the public comment, and we'll move on to item number five on your agenda, approval of the consent agenda, which consists of the approval of the May, I'm sorry, November 25th, 2024, regular meeting minutes, payment of bills adopting this agenda as presented.
So moved. All support.
Motion by Counselor Wencesky, support by Counselor Stibbitts. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried, thank you. Item number six, we'll invite CISMIA Representative Zach Palco to give us a, some information on invasive species within the city of Luddington. Welcome.
And Zach, if I can just give a little introduction, too.
Sure.
Zach is here with the CISMIA group. There's centered, he's centered in Cadillac area. When we looked at our ARPA funds and we had our community meeting, one of the things that was voted on to spend some of the ARPA funds was for invasive species. And so, we hired CISMIA to come in and do a survey of invasive species that we saw in Luddington. We did not go on private property. I helped them with this a little bit, too. They, we drove the streets and the alleys, and then we cited the properties that we saw that had invasive species. So, he's going to share that with us tonight and kind of give us an outlook. Then, the next plan is, once we look at the survey and see what the results are, he'd like to know from city council, what is the next step, because he also was paid to come up with a plan of how Luddington can try to control these invasive species. And so, it's quite a job. Thanks, Zach.
Thanks, Kathy. Like Kathy said, my name is Zach Pecklow. I am with North Country CISMIA. CISMIA stands for Cooperative Invasive Species Management Network, or, yeah, Cooperative Invasive Species Management Area. So, the state's broken into 22 CISMAs, and I cover a six-county area, which includes Mason County. So, super brief, I just want everybody to know kind of the definition of an invasive species. There is actually a legal definition. It's a organism that is not native to an area and is likely to cause damage to either the economy, the environment, or human health. And all of that kind of comes into play here with what you can see right there is a whole bunch of invasive bittersweet growing along power poles. So, like Kathy said, last, this previous summer, our staff surveyed the city. We used iPads with GIS information on them, so it had all of the parcel layers, and basically we clicked and selected, yes, this property has Japanese knotweed, yes, it has Tree of Heaven. So, there's quite a long list of properties that are affected. So, results at a glance, and this is all summarized on that printout, but we had upwards of 700 parcels affected by these three species. So, while we were looking at invasive species, you know, all of them in general, the city is primarily plagued by three main ones, Japanese knotweed, Tree of Heaven, and invasive bittersweet. So, with all of this data that was collected, and each, each of these little red dots on here is going to be a parcel that shows up on the tax roll. Now, some of them are going to be a little bit bigger for big chunks of land for the schools and DAO property, but you can kind of see it's a problem throughout the city. And so, the maps are broken into, I have separate maps for each of the three species, and then kind of the next one is kind of the important one to, to see is, this is the map of the, the distribution of Japanese knotweed in the city. So, Japanese knotweed is kind of disproportionately impactful. So, there's 24 infestations, and these are, and we'll, we'll get to a couple pictures here in a bit, encroaching on alleyways, growing through concrete, busting through home foundations. Japanese knotweed is native to Japan, obviously, and evolved, having lava flows over top of it, so the plant can go right through fresh concrete. So, obviously, you can see the infrastructure concerns there. So, I zoomed in a little bit more on one of the wards here, and you can kind of see the breakdown. Like I said earlier, pretty, pretty throughout the city and throughout the wards, you know, there wasn't a single ward that was unaffected by invasive species, so. And then, here is the Japanese knotweed distribution for this ward, so obviously, way less, but like I said, disproportionately impactful. So, this will get into some of the, the different species here. You can see on the right, there is Tree of Heaven saplings that are growing. Those saplings are probably less than a year old. The plant grows clonally, so when, and it's a big problem that we're trying to hash out with our utility companies of when they come through to clear the lines, and they cut down one main parent tree, you kind of get what you're seeing there, a whole spur of re-sprouts that come up, and they are often far harder to control. What you see climbing up the side of the building there into the utility poles is invasive bittersweet, and equally problematic for all of that extra weight that's added. And so, kind of what Kathy alluded to in the intro is, is a lot of this started way back in 2018 with Joe Stickney. Joe reached out to me and said, hey, we have a problem. We can't get our ambulances and fire trucks down these alleyways. Stuff is growing way too far into the alleyways, and it's, it's a public safety concern. So, we paid a lot of attention to the alleyways in terms of this encroachment. So, we actually treated here this year, I grabbed this photo from Google Street View, just so folks could see kind of what it looked like way back, I think that's 2018. This is Oriole Field, right by the pickleball courts, and this is actually before consumers had come through and cut all of this down off of the utility line, but like invasive species do, after they came through and cut it off of the line, it all just flushed right back, so. And then, here is a good clump of Tree of Heaven around some big transmission lines. And like I said, those are probably a year or two old, so they grow very quickly. And just more kind of visuals, so everybody can get a grasp of, you know, what we're dealing with here in the city, and I, in no way cherry picked any of these, this is pretty common. You don't have to go far to find examples like this. So, tentative plans for 2025, if everything kind of goes through with the funding that was hopefully set aside, is we're hoping to address the Japanese knotweed. Obviously, we can't do all of the 700 parcels that, you know, we surveyed, kind of identified what the best bang for the buck would be for this kind of first year where we're dipping our toes into the water with management. So, addressing the 24 impacted parcels of Japanese knotweed, we would, any that were infrastructure concerns, the plan would be to have the city cover that cost, and in these costs, all of these treatments are done at cost. We are a local unit of government, we're affiliated with the Mason Lake Conservation District and the Macosta Conservation District, so it's not like a private contractors coming in here and doing this control work, it's all intended to be at cost. And then, so with any of the Japanese knotweed that wasn't basically encroaching in the right-of-way or impactful, you know, directly to sightline views, offering a kind of a 50% cost share for those impacted properties, because we still want to incentivize people to have this management done, but recognize that there, you know, is still quite a cost associated with it. Kind of some other highlights of it would be, so as part of the work that we did, like Kathy mentioned, there'll be a formal written management plan created with all of these maps, and then basically steps for the future, kind of getting us towards that goal of invasive species eradication within the city. kind of getting us towards that goal of invasive species eradication within the city. And it'll have realistic goals, obviously. You know, we would love for the city to be free of invasive knotweed and bittersweet, but kind of being realistic and making stepping stones to get there and what we could actually achieve. Kind of some other stuff for plans for 2025 would be working with the DPW staff to train them up on how to properly treat these invasive species. One of the reasons these become so problematic is because it's Michigan. Everybody thinks you can just cut it down and that's, you know, problem's over. With Japanese knotweed, Tree of Heaven, bittersweet, you cut it down, it's like you're putting Miracle Grow on it. They come back twofold. So, basically, getting that knowledge to the staff that we already have and working hand-in-hand with them, not reinventing the wheel, you know, just making sure people have that knowledge to tackle these correctly. And so, feel free to cut me off if I'm rambling. I like to ramble. But, so all of the other two species, invasive bittersweet and Tree of Heaven, property owners could have us manage those species for them at cost. Right now, we hadn't planned on any sort of incentive through the city. Our at-cost program is still at cost. It's very reasonable for landowners to have us control invasives for them. Or another big component of what we do is we provide that technical guidance to the landowners if they're feeling empowered to do the treatment themselves. So, basically, we're here to help however people want us to help.
So Zach, if I can ask a question too. This Japanese knotweed that we're looking at maybe attacking and knocking out of hopefully the city of Luddington, maybe next summer. Can you explain how that is treated, just so people have an idea on how, no, this is different than Tree of Heaven and bittersweet. But how would we attack that knotweed?
Yeah, so with knotweed, there's a couple different approaches depending on where it's growing or, you know, how dense it is. For most of the stuff around the city of Luddington, we have this, it's called a stem injection tool. It looks like a squirt gun with a little needle on the end. So, Japanese knotweed has hollow stems, so that needle goes right into the stem. And then, you pull the trigger and that herbicide is put right into the hollow stem. That is a super effective method and it's great for settings around garden beds where you wouldn't want to potentially harm anything. And it's great for, you know, if you have pets or anything, there's actually no herbicide that anybody could come in contact with. But there are some other different methods depending on if we're dealing with a massive area. So, it's all kind of site-specific.
And one thing I understand is invasive species is not a one-and-done thing. So, and we're talking about maybe involving the DPW too. And I've worked with, well, we have worked on Japanese knotweed in my neighborhood. The first year, it knocks out about 90% of the plants. The next summer, about 90%, maybe 95% of them are gone. And then, you have to deal with what's left that summer. And then, the third summer, there were just a couple of little straggly things and they're pretty sick, once they come up after we've treated them. And we haven't had any since. So, I like people to know it's not a one-and-done thing. It's a maintenance kind of thing. But the first year really makes a big, big difference.
Yep, and to that tune, we treat a lot of Japanese knotweed for Wexford County Road Commission. Even though our prices have gone up as we haven't gotten grants to lower the cost for our at-cost program, their bill has continued to drop year after year as the sites are smaller and smaller. So, that's kind of something to look forward to. I know it sounds pessimistic, like, oh yeah, we're going to have to do this in following years. That's just the nature of it. Invasive species is never a one-and-done. But it's not like you're going to have to double your effort the next year.
Zach, just a real quick question.
Yep.
In terms of names, the invasive bittersweet, is that what is also called oriental bittersweet?
Yeah, everybody's trying to move away from different names and they're trying to standardize it to invasive bittersweet. So, yeah, that invasive bittersweet is the same as oriental, Chinese, round leaf. So, there's a lot of kind of overlap there, but they all fall into that same umbrella of invasive bittersweet.
Thank you.
And then, so kind of moving forward.
Zach, a couple of questions.
No, yeah, you're good.
If I heard Zach can hear correctly, with the funds that were set aside from ARPA, that'd be able to address the knotweed for the first year throughout the city?
We're planning on that, yes. Yep, yep. And again, if it's on city property, city right-of-way, alleys, you know, in between the sidewalk and the street, we'll pay the whole thing. If it's just in your backyard, a little patch that's maybe, or a big patch in your backyard, we'd ask for 50/50, so.
And part of the reason for that, still, and you know, that 50% for if it's not in the right-of-way is Japanese knotweed can very easily spread and become, you know, quickly established. So, for on road sides, when the road commissions come through and mow it and those stalks get dragged down the road, each of those cut stalks can root and start a whole new patch. So, that's kind of the thought process there behind addressing some of the stuff that's not directly in the right-of-ways.
Council King?
For the bittersweet and the Tree of Heaven, CISMIA will come in and help the homeowner at cost.
Correct, yep.
Could you give a rough ideas to what is at cost? A fucking hundred, 500, thousand?
So, for that clump that we treated near Oriole Field, I believe it was a hundred or $200. The at-cost rate is pretty low. The biggest at-cost job that I did in the city of Luddington was around $600 this year and it was quite large. The one thing that we do not get involved with, and you know, we communicate pretty clearly with property owners, is the tree removal. So, with Tree of Heaven, you know, we could be dealing with trees that are 60, 70 foot tall, overhanging a house. There is a pretty big cost associated with removing that tree properly. And part of the issue is, those trees need to stay in place and die after the herbicide treatment for about six months. So, when a arborist comes and sees that tree's dead, a lot of times, they run away because they think, you know, it's going to have rot and be a hazard to take down. We get ahead of that and when we're working with a property owner that has a large tree, we say, hey, reach out to an arborist, let him know that these treatments are occurring, you know, it'll still be safe to take down in six months. But you know, there's that constant communication for that tree removal. And so, and this might answer a couple other questions. And so, moving forward, we are constantly keeping our eyes out for any grants that might qualify for this work in the city of Luddington. You know, whether it be an urban forestry grant to help with Tree of Heaven removal and replanting, or various community foundation grants. There's a lot of different avenues to pursue with it. One of the avenues that I'm pushing very heavily for is to work with consumers because they bear quite a lot of responsibility with their tree trimming crews that come through. And they are following best management practices, you know, they come through and they clear their lines once every five to six years. And they treat those invasive species that they trim, but like we talked about earlier, it's not a one-and-done. So, everything comes right back the following year if they don't come and address it again. So, I've chatted with some higher-up folks at consumers and trying to get some of that hashed out so that we don't basically push it out of the right-of-way onto private property.
Anyone else?
Yeah, one last question. When you treat, for example, you explained the process around the knotweed. What about removal once the plant has died?
Oh, so.
Is it okay to put that out in the street for DPW to pick up or?
Yeah, and so, and kind of what I've been chatting a little bit with Kathy about is, you know, a lot of these questions that are going to come out, you know, and these are all, you know, very common, great questions. We're basically putting together a little PR campaign that will have answers to a lot of these common questions. And so, the answer is, yes, that can go right into the community compost pile if they are dry, dead stalks. There's no risk of them rooting or spreading. A lot of times, we encourage folks to burn them on-site. You know, they, when they're dry over the winter, they snap and they're great kindling and just toss them on a little bonfire and sit around for a bit.
So, just to kind of, and to wrap up a little bit, the maps that Zach has shown on the whiteboard, the city council has those on their iPads. You can see those. And I'm going to have, Heather Tekoski's going to put those on our website and Facebook page tomorrow. So, anybody from the city, you can blow up your ward and see if maybe your house has some invasive species in it that we saw too. So, that'll be available hopefully tomorrow. And then, on May 8th, we're going to have an invasive species workshop. It's going to be at Harborview Marina and we're going to actually have some information. Then, we're going to break up into different sessions. So, if you're interested in Tree of Heavens, you can go listen to that. And 15 minutes later, if you want to go see how to treat your bittersweet, you can go do that. So, we're going to try to make it really a hands-on kind of thing too. And Zach and his crew will be there to help. Anybody have any last-minute questions for Zach?
I'm pretty easy to get ahold of, pretty responsive, so feel free to reach out. And I would just like to thank the city of Luddington because of the six counties that I cover. You guys are the first city to kind of really dive into invasive species. I have a lot of cities that are about 20 years behind in terms of, you know, the invasion curve. They are just starting to see the problems and I am imploring them, you know, follow in the footsteps of Luddington. So, thank you guys.
Thank you Zach.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item number seven. And agenda item A is the 2025 budget and three-year capital improvement plan. And I'll turn it over to City Manager Aldrich for some comments and then we'll go into our public hearing.
I just wanted to preface the public hearing this evening with a couple notes. I know that there was some comments on social media about a proposed tax levy as part of the public hearing in the budget adoption process this evening. Because the city of Luddington collects taxes at the end of the summer and our budget is adopted at the end of the year, our actual tax levy adoption, an approval process, happens in the summertime. So, the tax levy was already approved back in July. Therefore, there's actually no tax levy being discussed or approved tonight. So, it's kind of confusing, but you actually all already paid your tax bills. And public hearings were held last summer. The city follows a process called the truth in taxation. It's kind of convoluted, I think taxes are to most of us. The truth in taxation law was passed in 1982. Truth in taxation basically allows local government entities to capture tax revenue that would otherwise be lost through headly rollback. So, headly rollback rolls back our tax levy to not allow, basically to protect your taxes from increasing more than the rate of inflation. But then, that also means local governments lose the tax revenue that year in new property construction. So, truth in taxation allows local governments to capture the tax revenue from that year in new property construction. So, it allows us to adjust the millage rate within the headly rollback, so we're not overriding headly. We're just adjusting the millage rate to allow us to capture the new tax dollars in new construction from last year. So, again, it's confusing. I've been here for a month and I've been beating my head against a wall trying to understand it. So, if you would love, I would love for anyone to come talk to me about it and have a conversation because I've had many with staff and equalization and assessing departments. So, basically, what we do here is in July, we hold public hearings as part of the truth in taxation process. And there's the public hearing requirements. And basically, state statute says that unless we comply with Section 16 of the Uniform Budgeting and Accounting Act, we have to follow this long public hearing and ordinance and resolution process. And the city of Luddington does comply with Section 16 of the Uniform Budgeting Act, which basically just says, in order for us to adopt a tax levy, like truth in taxation, we have to hold a public hearing. It has to be notified in the newspaper, which it was back in July. It has to even have a certain font requirement and level of boldness in the newspaper. The public hearing is held and then that tax levy can be adopted, I suppose. And then, taxes can be collected. And then, we collect those taxes. Then, we go through our budget process, which we're going through right now. And then, the Uniform Budgeting Act, which is what makes it very confusing for the public and even the staff. The Uniform Budgeting Act, I think Sean is zooming in for us there, requires the bold letters at the bottom, regardless of your fiscal year-end, regardless if you're following truth in taxation. They require in bold on that public hearing notice, even if you're just adopting your budget and you already approved your tax levy six months ago, that public hearing notice has to include the language. The property tax millage rate proposed to be levied to support the proposed budget will be a subject of this hearing, even though we already did it six months ago. But it's a statutory requirement that we repeat it again in the budget hearing notice for tonight. So, there is no tax levy being discussed this evening. It's just a statutory requirement that we have to include in that public hearing notice again. Many communities have a budget process and their tax collection happen at the same time of the year. So, they don't have this weird public hearing notice gap. We are a unique community where our fiscal year is calendar year. So, ours just doesn't line up like that. So, I apologize for any confusion. And we'll do better next year about educating and making that more clear. So, you will not see any proposed tax levy, public hearings, or discussions until the summertime. I hope that clears that up. We'll still obviously take public comment about that, but I just wanted to make that clear this evening. Thank you.
All right, we'll open up for a public hearing. We will limit the time limit to two minutes for public comment regarding the public hearing. And as we said earlier with the, if you wanted to speak, please step to the lectern, speak directly into the microphone, state your name, street address, ward, city of residence, and organizational affiliation. Once you've done this, you'll be recognized for two minutes. Please address all comments to this chair. Again, we had asked that when the time limit expires that you finish your comments and if you want to present any sort of material. Mr. Hamersley, is it two minutes? Am I correct in saying two minutes or is it three minutes?
For the public hearing?
Yes.
It can be two minutes.
Okay, thank you. You wish to leave materials, you can do it on the lectern shelf below. And there'll be, as I said before, there'll be another public comment at the end of the meeting that's outside the scope of this public hearing.
Tom Rada, sixth ward. State law, we saw there earlier, MCL 141.412 mandates what the public notice for a hearing on the budget of a local government shall contain. One is a statement already pointed out, the property tax millage rate proposed to be levied to support the proposed budget will be a subject of this hearing. But in the dozen years of Luddington budget hearings, I've But in the dozen years of Luddington budget hearings I've attended, this has never been the case. Even when our city budget also mandates that proposed tax rates will be a subject of this budget hearing with a vote after the budget is passed. Saying in Section 8.6, quote, "To implement the adopted budget, the state council shall adopt, prior to the beginning of ensuing fiscal year, a tax levy ordinance authorizing the property tax levy or levies and setting the tax rate or rates." What has happened instead is that our city attorneys have allowed you to pass these tax rate hikes during the middle of summer. Ross Hammersley has permitted you to pass tax hikes, bringing in over $200,000 more above the inflation rate in property taxes in both July of 2023 and 2024 than would have been raised had you not overrode headly rollbacks with your unanimous vote, stealing money from your constituents that you weren't entitled to. State law clearly says you must pass such tax levy proposals after the budget hearing. The city charter is even clearer, that it must be done after a budget is adopted. Why don't you follow the law laid down by the people of this city and the people of this state? Lastly, I hope and expect that there will be no budget amendments for 2024 once 2025 arrives on the calendar. Making 2023 budget amendments in March and May of 2024, as this council did, was illegal and you all should know that.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Mike Shaw, 302 North Lavinia. I was the one that put the social media post out and I'll be honest with you, it was very confusing when I saw that notice, because that notice actually says that, you know, all that language that you just put up there, and it confused people and it confused me. So I apologize for any confusion, I'll admit that. But the coming year, when I have some input, I would like to see that operating millage dropped by maybe one mil, to show goodwill and good faith to the people of Luddington that at least we're trying. And I know the city needs money and I know we need to operate, I get that. But what about the people? Let's give them some relief as well. So let's make it fair, let's make it fair for everybody. And next year, hopefully we won't be raising the taxes again, but things go up. And I know the other factor is the state equalized value every year, guess what, you get that little notice that says this is not a tax bill, but guess what? It's a tax bill. It's telling you that your assessed value has gone up, so that also affects your taxes right there. So all the more reason to consider, respectfully consider, giving some relief to the citizens. And if you lowered it a half a mil or a mil, and maybe we don't have to hit that headly rollback amount. So again, apologize for confusion, it was very confusing to me, I'll admit that, but thank you for all that you do. I know you're trying to do the right thing and I think together, we can also work together and do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for the public hearing? All right, without objection, we'll go into closed public hearing and move on to item number, sub-item number two, adopting a 2025 budget and three-year capital improvement Look for a motion to adopt that?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, any comments or questions? Hearing done, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Counselor Stibbitts?
Yes.
Counselor Trizano?
Aye.
Counselor Wencesky?
Yes.
Counselor King?
Aye.
Counselor Bolger?
Yes.
Counselor Large?
Yes.
Counselor May?
Yes.
All ayes?
All right, thank you, motion carried. We'll move on to committee and staff reports. First up is Finance and Personnel, Counselor Wencesky.
Yes, we have no report tonight, but we do have a few action items. The first one is to adopt ordinance number 550-24, a multi-year contract with a Civic Plus codification of ordinances. Pursuant to Section 8.10 of the Charter of the City of Luddington, the city council hereby approves the city manager and the city clerk to enter into a multi-year agreement with Civic Plus for supplementation services and codification of ordinances into the city code annually. This will cost the city $2,758 for the year of 2025. And I move to adopt ordinance number 550-24.
Support.
A motion by Counselor Wencesky, seconded by Counselor Large. Any comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor of adopting ordinance number 550-24, signify by saying aye. I'm sorry, you're right, thank you. I do that a lot, I'm sorry, Dylan.
Counselor Large?
Yes.
Counselor May?
Yes.
Counselor Bolger?
Yes.
Counselor Stibbitts?
Yes.
Counselor Trizano?
Aye.
Counselor King?
Aye.
And Counselor Wencesky?
Yes.
All ayes?
Motion carried, thank you. Item B is the first presentation of ordinance 551, I'm sorry, Kathy.
You can take over.
Anybody else here?
The next thing is the first presentation of ordinance number 551-24, the clerk's salary. An ordinance to amend number 525-23, the ordinance establishing the compensation of elected officials and to repeal all ordinances in conflict herewith. The city of Luddington ordains, section one of ordinance number 525-23, shall be amended to read as follows. City clerk, the annual salary for the city clerk commencing January 1st, 2025, shall be $80,874. And this is a first presentation. The next is ordinance number 552-24, an ordinance to amend ordinance number 526-23, the ordinance establishing the compensation of elected officials and to repeal all ordinances in conflict herewith. The city of Luddington ordains, city treasurer, section one of ordinance number 526-23, is hereby amended to read as follows. The city treasurer, the annual salary for the city treasurer commencing January 1st, 2025, shall be $58,656. And again, that's first presentation tonight. Next one is to approve change order number four for Cartier Park Bath House. The new bathhouses at Cartier Campground are now complete. The last maintenance issue has been addressed by rerouting the showerhead in the bathroom for a total cost of $4,150. But let me tell you, it wasn't just the showerhead, they had to redo all the plumbing and they had to fix some of the flooring too. So my question had been, why does the showerhead cost $4,000? But it was a lot of the plumbing and the rerouting. Project general allowance for construction, contingency allowance, fuel, and other items totaled $98,000. The previous three change orders used $44,928.10 and with the additional usage of $4,150 for the redirection of the showerhead, the result was an overall reduction from the original contract amount by $48,911.90. So we still have money left over in the construction grant, even though this is change order number four. So I make a motion that we okay change order number four for the Cartier Park Bath House project.
I'll support. Sorry. Doesn't matter.
All right, we have a motion by Counselor Wencesky, support by Counselor Stibbitts, to approve change order number four for Cartier Park Bath House. Any comments or questions? Hearing done, will all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried, thank you.
And the last thing we have is to approve an employee residency waiver. The Luddington Police Department is in the process of hiring Marshall Law. Mr. Law has successfully passed a background check, physical and psychological examination. Mr. Law comes to Luddington PD with two years of previous experience with the Lake County Sheriff's Department, along with years of volunteer and community service, including being on the National Board for the Special Olympics torch run. Mr. Law would be an excellent, much-needed addition to the Luddington Police Department.